Good evening. At this time, please silence your cellphones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who wish to speak during the city council meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the front entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and those participating via Zoom will each be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes speaking time. This time, I will call to order and convene the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, The invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Harold Cortez of the Seventh Day Sabbath Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by council member Sylvia Robles. So if you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
My name is Pastor Harold Cortez from the Seventh Day Sabbath Church, and it's a privilege and honor to be invited here. And I'm going to ask the Lord to preside tonight, so let's bow our heads. Gracious Father in heaven, we are so thankful for your blessings, and we invite you to be the president, so you can preside all the issues today and you influence on the right way all the decisions. I ask for a special blessing, a personal blessing, upon Mayor Darcy McNabbo, for council member Sylvia Robles, for council member Douglas Wilson, for Mayor Proterm William Hussey, for council member Jeff Allen, for city manager Harold Doofy, for city clerk Deborah Thomas, and other functionaries and persons that are here present. Thank you and Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge again. I pledge to the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation and every individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Cortez. Thank you council member Robles. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Proterm Hussey?
Present.
Mayor McNabbo?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to, a removal of items from the agenda tonight?
No additions or additions.
All right, so we do have a special presentation tonight. This is a presentation to the family court awareness, we're proclaiming the Family Court Awareness Month of November. Do we have Sandy Roth with us on Zoom?
Yes, she is on Zoom. If she could turn her video on.
Okay. So what we will do... There she is. Oh, I saw her. There she is. Wonderful. So Ms. Ross, I'm going to read the proclamation out loud and then give you a few minutes to talk to us about familycourtawareness.org if you'd like.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll begin with the proclamation. This is a Family Court Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, the F C A M C, is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. And whereas the mission at the F C A M C is fueled by the desire to create awareness and change in the family court system for the conservatively estimated 58,000 children a year ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported as murdered during visitation with a dangerous parent. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is to increase awareness on the importance of empirically based education and training on domestic violence and child abuse, including emotional, psychological, physical, and sexual abuse, as well as childhood trauma, coercive control, and post-separation abuse for judges and all professionals working on cases within the family court system. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid, evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value. And whereas the mission at the F C A M C is to educate judges and other family court professionals on evidence-based, peer-reviewed research. Such research is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. This research includes the adverse childhood experiences (ACES) study, the co-principal investigator Vincent Falidi from Kaiser Permanente CDC, the child custody evaluators beliefs about domestic abuse allegations, principal investigator Daniel Saunders, University of Michigan, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice, and child custody outcomes in cases involving parental alienation and abuse allegations, principal investigator Joan S. Meyer, G W Law School, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Darcy McNabbo, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members, proclaim the month of November to be Family Court Awareness Month and encourage all residents to support their local community's efforts to prevent the harm of children in the hands of family members and to honor the value of the lives of children. And it's presented this 25th day of October 2022. So we will have this nice proclamation sent to you, Ms. Ross, along with a nice little key-shaped pin with our city logo on it. And I would like for you to take some time, if you would, to talk to us a little bit about this project.
First, I want to really thank you and council and community members who are honoring or raising family court awareness.
P J Austin Park.
Oops. So thank you very much. My name is Sandy Ross, and I'm a survivor, and I'm also a child safety advocate. And there are some pretty serious child safety issues happening in the court system. In fact, this year, just in the past year, from last Family Court Awareness Month to this formally Family Court Awareness Month, 10 California children have been murdered in this context. It's not a positive, happy topic, but it really needs to be discussed. When I ended up in the family court system dealing with some child safety issues, I had no idea how hard it would actually be to keep my child safe. So what we're seeing is that family court rulings are widely based on parents getting a fair share of their parenting time with the child, even more so than child safety. Child protection has been viewed as the job of social services, but the family courts are ruling on the same cases every day with child abuse concerns. I'll just give you some statistics because people think if they're not in the family court system, it might not apply. But one in 15 children are actually victims of child abuse, and that's usually perpetrated by a family member or a parent. Seventy-five percent of child sexual abuse is perpetrated by a family member or someone known to the family. More than 50% of the time, this is a big one, more than 50% of the time when there's an allegation of child abuse raised, in the context of a custody case, the judges are switching physical custody to the alleged abuser more than 50% of the time. A child's exposure to abuse is one of the strongest indicators of a risk of incest victimization. Abusive parents are more likely to seek sole custody than nonviolent ones, and they are successful about 70% of the time, and that's according to the American Psychological Association. And when domestic violence, it often worsens after separation or divorce, and the focus turns on to the children. So I'm going to say domestic violence is about power and control, and that desire to maintain power and control doesn't just vanish when the relationship ends. Family court system becomes a highly effective platform, and training is a necessity. So our primary goal this year with Family Court Awareness Month is just basically to shine the spotlight on a need for training for judges and family court professionals who are ruling on this, on these cases every day. Our children's lives are literally dependent upon the court becoming educated on these issues. So thank you again. Thank you very much. It means the world to me and all the other parents that are trying to keep their children safe.
Thank you for your time and energy on this very important issue. I appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight, Ms. Ross.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items from the consent calendar tonight? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar forward, Mayor, in its entirety.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by councilmember Allen and a second by councilmember Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak? Public comment at this time?
I do see that there are two callers.
Okay.
Caller user number one and number two.
Okay. So this public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. A brief response from staff may be requested to address questions raised during public comment, or a request may be made for a matter to be agendized at a future meeting.
Caller number one, can you unmute if you'd like to speak under a public comment?
Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
Hello. Are you wanting...
Yes, hi.
You wanted to speak to us on item not on the agenda tonight?
I was calling about one that is on the agenda. Do I just wait until that one is brought up?
Yes. Which item did you want to speak on?
About the proposal on the land for the houses to be built on Rosedale.
Okay. So we will come back to you...
Do you know about how long it'll be for that one?
I don't, but we will come back to you on that one and allow you to speak during public comment on that item.
Okay, thank you.
And will you tell us your name, please? Okay. She is gone. Any other requests to speak at this time?
We have one more that I've just asked to unmute.
Okay. Caller number...
Number two.
Okay. If we could get the name of the caller one.
Hello?
Hello. Did you want to speak on items not on the agenda tonight?
No, I would like to speak on something that is on the agenda.
Okay. Which item did you want to speak on tonight?
The proposal on the houses, the five houses being built on Rosedale.
Okay, very good. When we come to that, we'll make sure we come back to you for public comment. Thank you. Please let us know what your name is.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I guess we'll come back, and we'll get their name when they speak. All right. So we will close public comment at this time, and we'll move on to our public hearings. The first one is art in public places. This ordinance will be presented by Heidi Guerra, Senior Planner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Proterm, and members of the council. This item supports the 2030 Vision Statement Goal Number Three to promote economic development by updating the zoning in preparation for future growth and attract and retain businesses, and also to preserve and protect our community and its exceptional quality of life through thoughtful planning. This ordinance is proposing to amend Title 18 Zoning, adding definitions for arts in public places to Chapter 18.06. Art in public places means any work of art which is designated for and cited in a space that is accessible to the public, from a public square to a wall inside a building open to the public. This ordinance is also proposing to add Chapter 18.81 establishing requirements for art in public places to our municipal code. Art located in public places has the power to add beauty, character, and a sense of history. It also provides a diverse and culturally rich environment. It enhances the quality of life, and it becomes an economic asset. It educates the public. It attracts new businesses and visitors. The purpose of adding art in public places requirement to our municipal code is to establish standards to new development projects. This is going to ensure that all future developments include an art component as part of the design of the project. The goal is to ensure that future public art is going to be present in the city. We also want to establish a fund to be used exclusively for the creation, purchase, installation, security, and maintenance of public art. Requiring an in-love fee provides developers the option to contribute to the city's art in public fund rather than providing a physical art piece. Art as defined on this proposed ordinance means an original creation by an artist that has a record of exhibits, has had public commissions, has sold the artwork, or has some sort of educational attainment within the art field. Some of the type of art that we would like to see includes sculptures, paintings, lighting elements, graphic arts, just to mention a few. Art in public places will be required to all construction and rehab projects, to new commercial and industrial construction projects that are remodeling or reconstruction of existing commercial and industrial property, and also to residential subdivisions or developments of two or more units. Some projects will be exempt from this ordinance, and that will be project projects that are undertaken by a public agency, the state, the school district, or any other government entity, remodeling, repair, or reconstruction that is caused by a disaster, for example, like a fire, earthquake, or flooding, remodeling, repair, or reconstruction of residential units that are existing. Also exempt will be projects of nonprofit social service or cultural institution projects, low or affordable housing projects, and private educational institutions. The monetary requirement for the art value is going to be of 1% of the estimated total building valuation for all new development projects, except single-family residential. That would be all the commercial, industrial, and multifamily. And the requirement for single-family residential projects of two units or more is going to be of one-half percent of the estimated total valuation of the project. The total building valuation, it is the total cost of the labor plus the materials. Developers will also have an in-love fee option, which will be a monetary contribution to be collected in the same amount as the required art value. Now, for the record, I would like to mention there was an error during our planning commission meeting. The percentage presented for the single-family residential developments was half of 1%. We would like to correct that to what we're presenting tonight, which is the one-half percent of the estimated total building valuation. The in-love fee will be managed through a public art fund administered by the city manager. The funds are going to be collected, and they will be utilized exclusively to purchase art for the installation, security, and maintenance of the art as well. Location preference is going to be given to places such as the library, parks, buildings, sidewalks, lobbies, and plazas. The art purchased through the art fund will be reviewed by the planning commission, and they will recommend approval by the city council. The work of art shall remain on the property where it was originally approved, and the way we're going to achieve this is to require a title for all the projects, all the works of art. And we're going to have before the placement of the art, we're going to require the owner to execute a recorded covenant or agreement where they have to outline the obligations to make sure the art is being maintained. This document is going to run with the land, so any successive owners will also be responsible to continue to maintain the artwork. The city will enforce any maintenance, repair, and restoration, and any art that is donated to the city will be property, will be owned by the city, and the city will maintain it. For the review process and submitted requirements, the proposed public art for new developments will be reviewed as part of the site and architectural review project, and that will be reviewed and approved by the planning commission. So all future development projects will be required to include a proposal of the art being proposed on the design or indicate that they have an intention to pay the in-love fee. The artwork is going to be reviewed based on the following criteria: the conceptual compatibility of the design of the art and the location, preservation and integration of natural features within the project, such as within maybe landscape areas, the structural and surface integrity, including permanence of the art, protection against death, vandalism, maintenance. We don't want to have excessive maintenance and repair cost. The representation of variety of the art within the community shall be incorporated. We want to make sure that there's a diversity on the style, design, and also the media of the artwork. And the art needs to be suitable in scale, form, and also content. Any work of art that needs to be removed or replaced is going to have, to be on the same way that it was approved. Otherwise, it's going to require a site and architectural review process again. The replacement costs shall be equal or greater than the original value. It has to be installed within 180 days from the removal, and the owner may choose to pay the in-love fee instead of replacing the artwork. Some of the additional requirements include that we will present an annual report to the city council regarding the Art in Public Places Fund, and we will show the expenditures made in the preceding fiscal year. Also, the Art in Public Places fee does not replace the required development fees, the application fees, or other fees that are part of our normal development review process. These amendments are exempt of the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15061, Subsection B, Subsection 3. This proposal will not have any significant effect on the environment because these amendments are changing administrative procedures only. A public notice was posted in accordance with state law, and as of today, we haven't received any comments regarding this ordinance. Staff recommends that the city council conducts the public hearing and directs the city attorney to read the title of the ordinance, waives the further reading, and introduce an ordinance of the city council finding zoning code amendment 2204 exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15061, Subsection B, and Subsection 3, and amending Title 18 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, Chapter 18.06 definitions, and adding Chapter 18.81 establishing art in public places requirements. This concludes our presentation, and we are happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Gueri. Before we move to questions, I want to ask for an announcement of any ex parte communications, conflict of interest, and/or recusals that are necessary. So we will go into questions of staff. We will open the public hearing and allow public testimony. We'll close the public hearing, and then the council will come back and deliberate on the item and determine how they would like to vote. So do we have questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that report, Ms. Gueri, and it was a good report. I have a question about this, the in-love fee, the fees to go in the fund. If all the developers, after this, if this is to pass, you know, and all the developers, if none of them come forward with a project that includes an art installation, and they instead offer to pay the in-love fees, all of them, who's going to do, what's the plan for that fund? Who's going to have the control of it? And at what point will an art project be decided, and who's going to decide on it, and all that stuff, and style, location, and all that?
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. So the in-love fee will be managed through a public art fund. If the developer decides not to make a physical art piece, but we have the funding and we have enough to create an art piece, we will bring this to the city council. We will make sure that the funding is going to be used for an art piece, and it's going to be for the purchase, for the maintenance, and also for any repairs that are needed. And then the council will have to determine where the location will be preferred. It's going to go to the planning commission first. We're going to have them make a recommendation to the city council for the type of art and the location, but the city council will have the final approval on the art. And the in-love fee, every year, we're going to provide a report to the city council to identify the funding and in what areas was spent the previous fiscal year.
So will we have, are we going to have like a, is there somebody who's going to pick art? Somebody, is it going to be the city manager? Is it going to be, are we going to have a subcommittee that we're going to put together that's going to be the Art in Public Places Subcommittee that picks the art?
Correct.
You know, because if no developer comes to you with a project and says, I want to do this art project, then it's incumbent on us as a city to come up with some art projects.
As part of our ordinance, we do have a section where we're going to ask, and maybe we create a workshop for the art committee that we have within the city, we'll ask the city council and the planning commission, so we can do a workshop for recommendations on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, we'd have a workshop with Park and Rec, since this is the group that brought it forward, but then it would be the public input would help us define what that art would look like, and then we'd bring it forward through the regular process.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, in Section 18.81.070, the public art fund, it also provides that the recommendations for installations may be requested by the Parks and Recreation Committee, the Art Committee, the Planning Commission, city council, or other committees. So there are opportunities for multiple committees to provide input.
All right. Further questions? All right. Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Well, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for deliberations and determination of how they would like to proceed. Councilmember Allen.
I think this is a, this is a really good thing for our city. It's a long time coming. We've, off and on, we've had a little bit of art in public places, you know? We've got the Velozza out front of City Hall here, and thank you to the city manager for having that repaired. And it's back in good writing shape now. And I think that it will be a nice addition to helping our city look even more beautiful than it does now. I agree with that it, it's a great educational tool for our city, and I look forward to seeing it passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Further discussion? Does anyone dispose to making a motion at this time?
Does it, is it asking for a motion of anything?
At some point, we need to make a motion on what we want to do and vote on it, yes.
So under the recommendations, it says direct city attorney to read the title of the ordinance.
Well, that's after we decide if the motion is to...
To do what?
If the motion is to adopt it.
I'll second that.
And, no, I'm not making that. I'm saying, I'm saying if that is the motion and it's seconded before we vote on it, then the city attorney would read it. If the motion is to not move forward with it and that's seconded and we vote on that, then we don't need to read the ordinance.
Then I'll make the motion to adopt the ordinance of the city council, the city of Grand Terrace, for Art in Public Places.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion by... Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Allen, and a second by Councilmember Robles. Any further discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The title of the ordinance for introduction is as follows: An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, State of California, Finding Zoning Code Amendment 22-04 Exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3, and Amending Title 18 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code by amending Chapter 18.06 definitions and adding Chapter 18.81, establishing art in public places requirements. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Right, thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to our second public hearing, which is a tentative tract map and environmental review. And so before I get into the staff presentation, I'll ask if there are any ex parte communications, conflict of interest, or recusals that needed to be announced at this time. All right, seeing that, Ms. Aguirre, may we have a staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Prothermon, members of the council. This item supports the city's 2030 Vision Statement, Goal Number Three, to promote economic development. The project's site is located at 11899 Rosedale Avenue. The 3.8 acre site is designated Low Density Residential on the general plan land use map, and it is zone R1-20, Very Low Density Residential with an agricultural overlay district on the zoning map. The site has an irregular shape, and it's located at the borderline city limits. The site bounds to the north at Linton Avenue with the city of Colton, and it bounds to the west at Rosedale Avenue also with the city of Colton. The project's site is surrounded by single-family residential to the north, west, and south, and to the east, we have La Cadena Drive, which is a major divider highway. The proposed project meets the intent of the general planned housing element and the land use element, which consists of older homes on larger lots, just like this one, that can be subdivided. The zoning designation encourages infill housing of underutilized land for residential construction, as long as we maintain the character of the very low-density single-family residential zoning. Tentative tract map 20395 is proposing a six-lot subdivision. The lots will measure between 20,018 square feet to 24,995 square feet. The zoning allows a density of two dwelling units per acre. The proposed project meets the density at 1.5 units per acre. This project also includes the concurrent review of a site and architectural review proposing the construction of five single-family residences. A public hearing was held by the planning commission on October 6th, in which the planning commission approved the site and architectural review for the construction of five one-story single-family homes. The project also includes one existing single-family residence and one existing detached accessory dwelling unit that are proposed to remain as part of the, one of the self-divided lots. The planning commission approval for the site and architectural review application and the construction of the homes is, it's a contingent upon the approval of the tentative tract map by the city council. The planning commission did recommend city council approval of tentative tract map. This is a closer look of the project's site. As you can see, the site has the existing single-family residence and the existing accessory dwelling unit located to the west side, fronting Rosedale. The remaining site is vacant land. It gradually slopes from the west at Rosedale, towards the east at La Cadena Drive, and this is about 16 feet difference within a span of 513 linear feet. The proposed subdivision and the residential structure meet all the development standards of the municipal code. That includes the density, the minimum lot size requirement of 20,000 square feet. They also meet the 25-front setback requirement. The rear setback exceeds the 35-foot setback requirement. In addition, the site setbacks, the lot coverage, the building height, those are also met by this development. The applicant is proposing a six-foot-high decorative block wall on each one of the created lots. The street improvements, as you can see highlighted on the image, include the construction and dedication of a 60-foot-wide cul-de-sac street that is going to provide access to the development right of Rosedale Avenue. Linton Avenue on the north and Rosedale Avenue on the west are also 60-foot-wide local streets. The street improvements will include, or are not limited to curb, gutter, street landscape, lighting, and paving to the center line of the frontage of the project's site. The city of Colton did review this proposal, and their comments are included on the project. There is a private property located to the northwest corner of the project's site. This address is 21559 Linton Avenue. The applicant has agreed to provide curb and gutter along the, the frontage of this property to create a non-interrupted access from Rosedale Avenue all the way to Linton Avenue. Lot 3, located on the west side, I'm sorry, on the east side of the project, fronts La Cadena Drive. This parcel is about 23 feet higher than the lower grade at La Cadena Drive. The improvements on this side are going to include a two-foot-high sealed barrier, a slope planting, and erosion control on the slope, and curb and gutter, and also repaving to the median of La Cadena Drive. The project's site drains to the east. Originally, the applicant was proposing a drywall system located on the east side of the cul-de-sac. However, very recently, staff worked with the applicant to provide a drainage solution that is going to minimize the maintenance from the city, and we revised this proposal to include infiltration systems on each one of the proposed lots, and instead, there's going to be a 25-foot drainage channel adjacent to lot number two. Based on these recent changes, we are proposing to modify the resolution and the conditions of approval, and we want to remove the drywall system references from the resolution and the conditions of approval on stamp pages 4, 13, 12, and 14, and to replace the Exhibit 2, which is the public works conditions of approval. They have been revised as of October 24th. In addition, this project is also going to have a concrete swell on the east side of the property lines and the north, and there's going to be a 10-foot-wide sewer easement located on the east side of lot number one. We have conditioned the sewer easement to be widened to 15 feet, or as required by Colton Public Works Water and Waste Water Department. This project is exempt from SEQA, Section 15332. This exemption applies to developments when the project is compatible with the general plan and the zoning code. It is located on less than five acres. It is surrounded by urban uses on a site that has no value to endangered species. It is served by public utilities, and there are no impacts to traffic, to noise, or to water quality. A notice of exemption has been included on the staff resolution for adoption. Public notice was provided consistent with the state law. We posted the public notice on the newspaper. It was mailed to properties within 500 feet from the project's site, and it was posted on three public places. Staff received one comment to date from one resident, the resident located on the northwest corner at 2155 Linton Avenue. This resident expressed concern about the proposed wrought iron fencing located on the south side of his property. He also was concerned about the improvements on the frontage of the street. He wanted to make sure that his property line is not going to be affected. The proposed subdivision and the construction of one single-family residence is consistent with the general plan and the zoning code. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt the attached resolution, approving tentative tract map number 20395, proposing a six-lot subdivision pursuant to the findings and conditions contained in the attached resolution. And we would like, we would recommend that the city council approves the revised resolution and conditions of approval, removing the references, as we mentioned, to the drywall system located, located on the stamp pages 4, 12, 13, and 14, and we revise the public work conditions of approval.
Thank you, Ms. Aguirre. All right, before I have council ask questions of staff, I'm just going to let you know that we will do questions of staff only, and then we'll open the public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant. Is there an applicant here tonight?
Yes.
And once the applicant, we hear from the applicant, staff or council will have an opportunity to ask questions, and then we will open for public testimony in favor or against the public hearing item. So we'll start now with questions of staff. Any questions of staff? All right, I want to know about the, the letter that we received regarding the iron fences and the property line. Is that something that staff can address for us, or is that something better addressed by the applicant?
I can clarify what was the concern, and let me show you the exhibit. Okay, so the property owner who, hall is the property owner that is located on the west, northwest corner. This site, we are, the applicant is proposing to provide sidewalk, curb, and gutter on the street frontage. The property owner was concerned that the front property line will not be impacted from those improvements. We did let him know that they won't be impacted. There's going to be a sidewalk, but the property line will remain the same as existing for him. The project is proposing a block wall, perimeter wall along every lot that is being created. However, for this property owner, he's going to have a block wall on the east side of his property, but in the south side of his property right here, we're proposing a six-foot-high wrought iron fencing. Right now, this project, or this property, has a chain link fencing, so it's going to be upgraded to wrought iron fencing on this side. We already have this property where we have the existing lot number six, the existing single-family residence with the existing ADU, is proposed to have block wall along this side. And what we want to minimize, or what staff recommends for the wrought iron fencing, we don't want to create an alley where there's two block walls creating an alley. We want to have an open space. That was the, our thought when we recommended the wrought iron fencing, but it was one of the concerns of this resident that he would like to have considered.
He would want to consider not having a wrought iron fence?
He wants to consider a block wall instead.
A wall instead. Is that allowed?
It is.
Okay, and so, and what, what would the steps be for that to happen?
If we, if the council determines that we do a block wall, it will be, this is the side yard, so it would have to be placed at six-foot high on the side yard, but the first 25 feet from the front will have to remain at three-foot high.
Okay, so why is that one set for an iron, wrought iron fence, but across the, the street to the other property, it's already a block wall? Why the difference there?
It was just to create an open area and to prevent an alley. From a block wall here and a block wall here, we will create an alley in here. I can have the property, the applicant, further explain that circumstance.
Okay. Questions of staff? All right, well, we will open the public hearing, and we will hear from our applicant.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our applicant is Tony Hara, and we also have the applicant civil engineer, Henry Pocis.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for, all the council members for spending time on my project, and I think it's a neat project for the area, brings, we're bringing in ranch-style homes, so I think it's a pretty good thing to, to consider. So, thank you all.
Okay. Questions of the applicant? All right. Councilmember Wilson?
Sure. What kind of, just out of curiosity, I, I know they're ramblers, right? I mean, but what kind of architecture are you fiddling around with?
Well, it's a ranch-style, they're all independent, though. Every, each one of the elevations is...
Sure.
Even though the lot 1, 2, 4, and 5, there is the same floor plan, but each one will look, the elevation will look, make you look like it's an, the curb appeal is a different style in each one.
Okay. And I could have hit staff about this, but I think I'd like to talk to you about it, and that is, so I see the drainage on the plan is going, well, you got yard drainage that's going around from a high point to, out to the street, and then it comes back around and into a, a channel that goes into a open channel. What made you decide to go with an open channel?
I will let my friend here, my civil engineer, answer that here.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious.
Good evening. My name is Henry Pocis, and to answer your question, we are doing a open channel for the purpose of maintenance issue. It is real easy to clean an open channel where you could see it away if it's plugged or not, rather than a pipe that you have to bring in, or it would be too late to know this is being plugged up when the water's backing up.
You don't like little red wagons with shovels and...
[laughing]
I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, can you tell me what the elevations are on each one of those lots? Because I can't see, they're too, too little.
I don't know. Elevation, you mean the...
The floor elevation on each one of the lots. You got them specified.
Can we zoom in? Okay, okay, just a second. Okay. On lot 1, we have pad elevation of 78.9, and on lot 2, we have 65, so we are looking about...
Five-foot differential, okay.
Five-foot difference, and we have a slope that goes from the, easterly property line of lot 1 to the, before, yeah.
It has a big drop down, I got...
Yes, it has, it has a, it has a, about five-foot drop, so, yeah.
Okay.
There is enough room to move the house also to, a little bit to the west to accommodate that one, but most likely, if, if the, if the future, or the owner wants to have it to stay like that, we could put a, a retaining wall on, on the west side of lot 2.
Can you also tell me lot 3, 4, and 5 elevations?
Lot 3 has, just a second. Lot 3 is 62, and lot 4 is 65, so we are looking only about three-foot difference. And lot 5 is 71, and lot 4 is 65, so that's a six, yes, six foot.
So are you warping the street, or is there just a natural elevation change from Linton to the south?
Oh, to the south, we have, we were trying to match the elevation at the south side.
Okay.
And, and if there's any elevation, we have a lot of room.
And you're holding the points from what's up above it?
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, last question. What is this new-fangled drainage mechanism that you're looking at? I'm looking at your page 2, I guess.
Yes.
And it is a infiltration trench drain.
Right, that is, that is the requirement of WQMP, which is the Water Quality Management Plan, which has been in...
And it goes in the parkway?
No, it goes to, to the property.
Okay.
Before it go, the, the intent was to filter the water that's generated inside the property, and to fill the water before it gets out into the street, so it is, we consider that clean water before it gets to the street.
Okay. Good enough, thank you.
Now, may I, may I answer your question, Madam Mayor, about why we are having a block wall on one side and, and wrought iron on the other side?
Please do, and would, and also, would you be willing to put, put a block wall in both places?
Yes, because the reason behind it is we don't have, we don't want to have a tunnel effect, where, where if you're going, if you're going into the project's side or, and coming off from Rosedale, you have a block wall, and you have a block wall, you feel like in a tunnel.
And so that might make you slow down when you're driving then?
Right, well, no, the, the visual effect. The, the visual effect, the visual effect of that one, that was the agreed, when we had a meeting with staff, see like, you have a six-foot, and then you have a six-foot on both sides, and you're getting in, remember, the sidewalk is right next to the block wall. So if you're in your car, and you have a block wall one side, block wall one side, that, that's what they said, okay, let's open up one, one side with the wrought iron fence.
Open up the one side into the property owner's property?
On the neighbor's property, the north side. So, well, that was the, that was the understanding. That's why we proposed to have a wrought iron, yeah. It's a combination, though. It's a combination of a, a two-foot, two-foot block wall, and on top of it is a four-foot wrought iron fence. It's a combination.
So it's a, it's a pony wall?
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Robles?
Does the, thank you for your report there. Does that, the house that is getting the block wall on the south side, does it have to have a block wall on that? Couldn't there about not be wrought iron fence on each side? And, second question, I don't know if you're the one that would want to answer this, or can, might be Ms. Aguirre, but what if homeowner in, on the corner of Litton there, that's not getting the block wall, or that's getting the pony wall with the wrought iron fence, if that, a property owner decides in the future, I want a block wall, a six-foot-high block wall here, and I don't care if it makes a tunnel effect, or a hallway effect, that they will be allowed to have one, correct?
Yeah.
At their expense if they choose? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and so, is that something the homeowner on the other side, the south side, wanted, that, that they've put in, they said, I want a block wall here, or is that, they're, they're not, they don't want the wrought iron fence to open it up and give it that open feeling?
Yeah, well, that was, that was the intent.
I mean, I'm, I don't care, it's just, I'm just throwing that out there, you don't even have to answer it, you know?
If the council determines that would like to see a block wall on both sides of the properties to enclose the backyards for both property owners, we can make that change.
Yeah, but what, I was referring to the opposite, no block walls, period, like wrought iron on both sides.
We can do that as well.
I mean, I mean, I don't really care, I'm just throwing that out there. Thanks.
Right. Mayor Protem?
Evening. Couple of questions, you probably, you know, help out the neighborhood there, or let them be at ease, because the biggest thing is fear of what's coming in. You know, I know that neighborhood's been well-established for a long time. What is the benefit your project will have for that neighborhood?
Is this a question for staff or the applicant?
The applicant. What is, what do you see your, the benefit for that neighborhood?
The benefit? Well, the benefit is to, to make the city surroundings look a lot better than they are right now. This, this land right now is a piece of land that, it just costs a wee bit of payment and all that every year, so if we can make it a nice development, a nice homes out of it, I think it's, it'll be a pretty good improvement.
So the benefit would be bringing in your housing project to make the other houses value, value go up, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. That'll bring the value on the neighborhood.
Okay.
Especially you don't see the ranch-style, big lots, 24,000 square foot lot, we don't see them anymore. Everything, it's pretty compact nowadays.
Yeah, pretty big lots. What, if this is approved, when do you think the project will be complete?
Normally, we're estimating about eighteen months completion from, we still got to go through the architectural submittals, but we're expecting about eighteen months completion.
Thank you.
All right, further questions of the applicant? All right, I know we have two callers who wish to speak at this time, so we will start with caller number one, and ask please to state your name. Caller number one, are you with us?
Hello?
Hi, would you please state your name, and then give us your, your comments on this item?
Can I say anonymous?
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, she may.
All right.
I've lived in that neighborhood since 1984. I actually live right on that street, and since they closed the entrance of Palm, since with all they put up the lights, the traffic alone that we gained on Rosedale from Litton to Palm became extremely more busier. It's become dangerous, the kids can barely play outside. And then when they closed the traffic down right there on Locatina, if they have to detour people, it gets really bad and congested. And that house across the street already has a lot of cars going in and out of the gate that causes traffic and commotion with the kids playing outside. And, because they have construction vehicles and people coming in and out already, so I'm kind of worried about how much more congested it's going to get with the families that are living in that back new area, and I'd like to know why they can't make their entrance on Litton versus Rosedale.
All right, thank you, I appreciate you waiting for us on this one, and I appreciate your comments.
Also, I'd like to know, are these going to be rentals, or are they going to be sold properties?
All right, we will find that out. All right, caller number two. If you're willing, please state your name.
Hi. Hi, I would like to say anonymous as well.
All right.
So, I just kind of want to mirror what the first caller said. I too live on Rosedale and have lived here since the early 2000s, and we have seen increase on traffic on Rosedale. The house that's on the northwest corner has, or sorry, northeast corner has multiple cars parked out in front of their house on a daily basis. Adding those five houses on Rosedale is going to increase, I'm assuming, an average of at least ten cars, you know, it's two cars per household. The developer did state in his comments saying that it, he wants to beautify the city. You're not even going to be able to see those houses, because they're going to sit so far back off of Rosedale, you won't be able to see them unless you turn down that street. The traffic on Rosedale, like the first caller said, is just very, is very heavy. During rush hour, they use it as a speedway. They fly up and down the street, especially when they hit that corner coming up Litton and turn left onto Rosedale. They use it as a straightaway. My concern is, has the city, like, done any investigation or any probing of how many cars that daily travel on Rosedale? And then I did have a question on the open drainage. Who is going to maintain that? Would the city be maintaining that, or the developer?
All right. Thank you so much for waiting for us, and I appreciate your comments. Are there any other requests to speak during this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we're going to come back to our applicant to answer some of these questions. One of them, though, is, has to do with the open, open drainage. I believe that that was addressed in our staff report, stating that we would have a landscaping district that was set up. Will that, will the landscaping district be the, the maintenance of that open?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. We're gonna have this project be part of the lighting and landscaping maintenance district.
Okay, so that won't be something that the residents that live there will have to worry about cleaning, but it will certainly be maintained?
It will be maintained, yes.
Okay. And then, did we do, I, I can't remember if I saw it in the report, that the planning commission, did they look at a traffic study as part of this project?
No, we did not look at a traffic study for this project. It was not something that we deemed required based on the size of the development for the five new single-family residential homes. What we did was a noise study on this project site.
Mr. City Manager?
And this project, because of its size, and because it's an infill, and the small size of it, is exempt from a traffic, a traffic study under California Environmental Quality Act. So we did not do a study on that.
All right, thank you. And then the, for the developer, for the applicant, the second caller wanted to know about any way that you could make the entrance on Litton instead of Rosedale?
The site doesn't allow it, based on the great separation from Litton. It's a better design to have the access through Rosedale Avenue, because the grading is, it, it gradually slopes to that area, it creates a better, a better design as well. Litton Avenue seems to be also more congested, and it's closer to the main street at Locatina Drive, which is a very highly transited street.
Okay. And then, lastly, the question was, are these intended to be rentals, or are they going to be purchased by the homeowner? And, and then the second question would be, if they are for, for sale, is there a preclusion against the homeowner renting them out at any time?
These properties will be for sale, as, as of right now.
That is correct. We cannot aff, I cannot afford to build rental properties, they have to be on the market very soon.
Okay. And so you will be selling them, but, but somebody that ends up buying them, and I, I see Mr. City Attorney nodding his head, does that mean that they would be precluded, precluded in any way from ever renting them out?
No.
Okay.
They could be rented out at any point in time.
Thank you. All right, so any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll come back to the council for their deliberation and determination of how they'd like to move forward. Councilmember Robles, and then Councilmember Allen.
I don't see any issues with the project. I think perhaps, maybe we ought to have staff look at the traffic situation there and give us some, some recommendations. I know we had the same issue with Observation Van Buren, with people using it as an alternate speedway, so, so I'm in support of the project.
Councilmember Allen, and then Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I can understand residents' traffic concerns, because this, just like Councilmember Robles stated, this is a, this traffic situation is a definite problem throughout our city. And so I think what they're experiencing on Rosedale is not unique to them. I've went over there to that area and drove around for the, the past couple of weeks, maybe three or four times, different times during weekday weekend, and just to sort of see what that area was like, that neighborhood and the traffic, and, and that sort of thing. And I didn't notice a, a lot of traffic, I, you know, I mean, it just seemed normal, like some cars on this, parked on the side of the road, you know, and a little bit of cars back and forth. So I didn't seem to think that there was a, any congestion or heavy traffic on that road unusually, so, so I, I agree with Councilmember Robles, I'm, I'm, except that I'm not that concerned about a traffic problem there.
Councilmember Wilson?
Correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but I think when the general plan was originally done, and of course the revisions since then, there have been traffic elements identified, and this is in keeping with the zoning for the area. So it's only five units, so the traffic, the trips are already predetermined with the environmental work that we did when we did the original general plan, as well as the zoning. And so now, what you're seeing is, is you've got a street that's not quite big enough for a collector. And so, with it being not big enough for a collector, that means the widths are not any more than just a standard street. And at peak times, you're going to have some traffic. Let me tell you, I get buses that run down my street on a regular basis. I mean, city manager and sheriff know. So, unfortunately, that's kind of a, the nature of the animal, there's going to be peak times that that's going to happen. And I, we, we've had in the past sometimes, when some folks have been concerned, you know, they've elevated their concerns about, you know, the kids playing out there in the front yard. Yeah, that's true, I can't let my kids play out in the front yard, although they're forty and twenty. But at the same time, I can't, I can't even walk my dog, you know, sometimes, down through that area. Every street's a little bit different, has different configurations to it, traffic patterns. I would say probably supervising your kids is the best bet to, to be able to make sure that that doesn't happen, because nothing's on, you know, automatic. You know, no matter, no matter how much we'd like it to be, it's not automatic, and we have traffic, and we have roads, and if you go out to the desert, you get sand and dirt, but here we have asphalt roads, and people drive too fast. So, you know, observe, be, be an example and observe the, the signs, and actually drive, you know, act like you, you can read the signs. This is a good idea, to drive at the right signage, so. Anyway, so that's my thought pattern on it, and I think we're already taking care of there, these, the mitigation or whatever that's thought of in relation to this tentative map is already taken care of. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to City Council, adopting the environmental exemption pursuant to section 15332 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, approving tentative tract map 21-01. Number 20395 proposing a six-lot subdivision on a 3.8 acre lot located at 11899 Rosedale Avenue, APN 0275-083-03-0000. And, take a breath.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Allen, and I have a second by Councilmember Wilson. Any further deliberation on this item? All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. Item number 11 on our agenda, which is funding for PARZ Section 115 Trust. Mr. Terry Shea, interim finance director. Although this does seem like unfinished business.
Your honourable mayor, City Council, we're back for the third time for the PARZ 115 Back in September, the City Council adopted Resolution 22-50, authorizing participation in the PARZ Post-Employment Benefits Trust Program, a section 115 trust, to address the city's unfunded pension liability. The city's UAL per the June 30th, 2020 actuary is $5,262,427. We're currently making payments on this through, from fiscal year '21, '22 to fiscal year '24, '24 totaling 8.9 million, of which 3.7 million is interest. The City Council asked for information on the disposition of the sales proceeds from the sale of the child care facility building. Staff provided this at the October 11th council meeting, and the majority of that money went to the annual unfunded payments. At the City Council meeting October 11th, 2022, the Council asked for additional information concerning the various investment strategies offered by the PARZ Post-Employment Benefits Trust Program. It offers these strategies, which is conservative, which is five to 20% equity, moderate, moderately conservative, 20, 40, 20 to 40% equity, moderate, which is 40 to 60% made up of equities, the balanced, 50 to 70, and then the appreciation, which is 65 to 85. I have portfolio manager Keith Stribling of Highmark Capital here, and he can go over the various investment strategies with you. And then I have Anthony Armus from PARZ here to go over the program, if you have any questions. The reasons to prefund the obligations are as follows. Complete local control over the assets, so the city has complete So the city has complete control over the assets, including contributions, dispersments, the timing, amount, and the risk tolerance of the investments. Assets can be transferred to the retirement system at the city's direction, potentially reducing, eliminating large fluctuations in employer contribution amounts because we've seen those UALs change quite dramatically between the years. We have a rainy day fund, emergency source of funds. When employer revenues are strained in difficult or budgetary economic times, we could use this to cover our PARS payments. And then diversification, which is, we can earn a lot more than we can in the general fund, which is spread some of the risks. You asked for a couple of people, cities that had participated in it. And if Keith could guess this, it'd be a miracle which two clients they are, but I don't think he could, so. Okay. These are some of our audit clients and this is their four-year history. And you can see fiscal year 2021, you know, very good return. And then fiscal year '21, '22, they, what the market, and Keith can speak to that. So this is the actual history. And you can see the one city with $22.5 million. At the end of the fourth year, they have $26.3 million. And the other one started with $515 and has $574, but different strategy. Staff is looking for direction for an amount for the initial funding of the PARS Section 115 Trust and we're recommending using a portion of the proceeds from the sale of the upcoming fire station building. Any questions of me before I turn it over to the consultants?
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Questions of Mr. Shea at this time? All right, please turn it over.
All right. Can we get the second one? All right, so here, Anthony, you can go first.
Thank you for that, sir. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having us here today. We just have a quick few slides in the presentation. As Terry mentioned, my name is Anthony Armus. I am a Client Services Coordinator on the PARS team. I support Rachel Sanders, who is the leading consultant and will be the leading consultant for the city's 115 Trust Plan. And with me here today is Keith Stribling from Highmark Capital Management that will oversee the investments for the program. As a quick recap, there are three different parties involved in the 115 Trust. PARS serves as the trust administrator, so we will serve as the central point of contact. We monitor plan compliance under Gatsby ruling, handle all the contributions in and dispersments out of the trust when needed. Again, we're the central point of contact for the city. Some of the functions PARS does not handle is the holding of the assets. Those get directed to our trustee, US Bank. And then Highmark, led by Keith here, will handle all the investment and manage the portfolio on behalf of the city based on the investment strategy ultimately selected. This is a Section 115 Trust. It is a combination trust where agencies can pre-fund both OPEB and/or pension. I know the city's focus is on pension, so the right-hand side where agencies can pre-fund pension and then use those assets as a reimbursement to the agency or to pay directly to CalPERS, the retirement system. We did include some of the actuarial results for the OPEB side, but we won't focus on that since, again, the focus is on pre-funding pension, where we have the data on the following slide. As Terry mentioned, the unfunded liability as of June 2020 is at that $5.6 million, putting the city about 70% funded. Again, one of the reasons to have this pre-funding fund available to help offset some of the pension and CalPERS obligations. And with that, I will turn it over to Keith to touch on the investment strategies.
Good evening and thank you for having me tonight. I work with Highmark, I'm a CFA charter holder. We have a number of CFA charter holders at the firm. We manage many of these trusts for cities, municipalities, water districts, school districts, counties, all over Southern California and Northern California. I work predominantly in the Southern California Riverside, out in the desert and in Orange County. I've been with the firm for 27 years and I just want to say it's, what you're doing is a good thing and congratulations on opening this. Some of the reasons for doing it were pointed out earlier, but I think what I like best about it is you really have the flexi, you know, when you send your money to CalPERS, it just goes to CalPERS and it's like swallowed up. But here it gives you some flexibility to work your budget when you need to. This is Efficient Frontier. I'm not gonna spend tons of time on it, but basically plots risks versus return. If you look here, does that one do the light? Okay, so these first two strategies, conservative and moderately conservative, I like to call those sort of the inflation-fighting portfolios. They are predominantly fixed income portfolios, anywhere between 80, 70 to 80% fixed income, but they have some growth in them to offset. So, you know, basically inflation is the bane of fixed income investing. It eats away at your purchasing power. Then the idea is to have some growth in the portfolio to grow the pie a little bit so that you can reinvest it in more fixed income. And as inflation eats away at the purchasing power of the fixed income, you're kind of building up the size of the pie to offset that. The, these two portfolios here, moderate and balanced, are 50 to 60% equities. Those are your classic sort of pension-type portfolios. This, although it is for the pension, may not necessarily have the same time horizon as the pension. And usually when we get to the, you know, what investment strategy you want to use, it's really about time horizon and risk tolerance. And of course, these two, these portfolios will have more volatility, you know, ups and downs with the market than these two portfolios, which are, you know, now that bond yields have risen, are finally relevant. And then the capital appreciation strategy, which is not very widely used, but some agencies have used it. And that one's much higher in equities, 75 or so percent equities. This is kind of the same slide, just kind of breaks down all the different sub-asset classes and I'm not gonna get too much detail there. But I will just say in general, some of the positioning of our portfolios happens to be currently we're underweight stocks, overweight bonds, favoring the value style over the growth and neutral weight on duration. So those are just, and those will be reflected across any of the portfolios. So whether you're, you have an active or passive strategy, you know, basically you have three decisions to make. Which investment objective to choose, which will determine 80% of your return because how much money you have in risk assets will really drive the overall portfolio return. Whether to be active strategy or passive strategy. Even if you are the passive strategy, there will be active decisions such as overweighting small cap or international or however, you know, we position those portfolios. Both the active and the passive strategies have those tilts. And then finally, you know, whether you put all the money in at once or your dollar-cost average, those are kind of your three main decisions you'll have to make. This slide just kind of shows you down here, if I can get the light to work. Yeah, down at the bottom is, those are long-term expected returns. I wouldn't expect, those are not expected to be smooth. Those are 30-year type of projections. And, you know, so obviously a year like this, we're not achieving that in anything, you know. I think it's worth noting, not only is this year turning out to be a bad year, but it's actually a historically bad year because it is the first time since 1969 that both bonds and stocks are down in the same year. So, you know, it's basically nowhere to hide and that'll be reflected in everybody's portfolios, including CalPERS when you see that come around. Maybe we'll get some recovery by the middle of the year, I'm not sure. You know, I, that's all, that's all we have here, but I'm glad to take any questions that you have. But, you know, essentially you can see, this is kind of what, this is kind of what you need to think about. How, you know, like what is the time horizon for the investments? And with these pension 115 trusts, I'll say, I've had everything from people telling me that, oh, we have a definite plan that we're gonna wind this down over three years and so, you know, they're gonna be on the more conservative side, to people saying, you know, we're basically not gonna touch this. It's just money that we set aside and we don't need. And so they'll take more risks of maybe being the balanced strategy.
So you mentioned with the capital appreciation. It seems like that's getting the highest returns, but you said very few agencies actually choose that one. Is that because of the high risk?
Yes, so a year like this, it's not gonna look good, right? You know, that kind of strategy is maybe okay if you're starting in a recession and, you know, stock prices are doing what they're doing right now. But, you know, I wouldn't want to start that and, you know, in good times necessarily.
All right, questions? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you for the, you know, short presentation there. Appreciate it, learned a little bit here. Now, you mentioned that this year is historically a bad year.
Yes.
Good time to buy.
And yeah, I can agree, my portfolio is reflecting that.
Most people concede, yes.
So does that mean it's the right time to make this move? Or would it be better to wait till this historically bad year starts reversing its trend? I mean, you know, I always hear buy when, you know, buy when it's down and watch it grow up. So I don't know, you tell me.
So it's a good question. Nobody actually knows the answer to that question, of course. But what I would say is, you know, when the stock market is down 25% as it, you know, it was, I think it's a little less than that right now because October's not been quite as bad. But that's usually, that is a typical type of a move when investors believe that recession is coming. And if you look at the Treasury yields, Treasury bond yields, you'll see Fed, the Fed's been raising interest rates so that, you know, they've moved interest rates from 0 to 3% and they're gonna raise them again to 3.75% at the next meeting. And the 10-year bond is at 4%. So that's, the 2-year bond is higher yield than the 10-year bond and we're approaching the point where the Fed funds rate is as high or higher than the 10-year bond. And those are also indications of recession. So, you know, that's kind of what's priced into the stocks right now is a recession. Then it just becomes the duration of it and the depth of it. And if it's going to be something nasty, then, you know, maybe there's more downside. If it can be averted to something, you know, just a normal recession, then maybe most of the work is done. And I, you know, I don't have the answer to that, but it's certainly a better time to do this than February. This past, this past February.
Okay. I was hoping you were talking about next February.
Not next February, the one that we already have, right?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, so, you know, and you have a nice aspect too in that bond yields have backed up quite a bit. So even, you know, we're finding bonds, you know, where before they were, yields on bonds were so low, you didn't even want to buy a bond. Now, you know, Treasuries are 4% and you can find high-quality corporate bonds at 5% and, you know, so those are, you know, provides, finally, it can provide some cushion because normally when the stock market's doing a 25% down kind of a move, bonds are kind of softening that. But, you know, like I said, this year it's historically bad because everything's down, so.
Now, how does Highmark and how does PARS, how do they get paid?
I'm sorry?
How do they get paid?
Oh.
You're not doing this, you're not doing this out of the kindness of your heart.
No, no, right, of course, everybody gets paid for what they do, right?
They should, for their expertise, absolutely.
Yes. So we, we get paid a percent of assets under management, like every other investment manager in the world. That, that's sort of the industry norm. And then the higher the account balance, the lower the fees in terms of percentages.
Councilmember Robles.
I have questions for both, for you gentlemen and for staff. One would be, what would you recommend? For example, I'm thinking moderately conservative, 20-year horizon, somewhere between, depending what our tolerance is here, 100,000, 250,000, 500,000. And then for staff, is who's gonna manage the strategy year-to-year on this portfolio?
So who's gonna manage the portfolio?
Well, the strategy, because, so, I mean, once we give the go-ahead here, is that every year it's the same? Or we can?
Oh, you can always change the investment objective. Yes, it can be revisited. So we typically meet with either the finance director or a city manager or the board or whoever. You know, every city kind of has it set up differently, but we'll meet with them anywhere between, you know, we'll meet with them whenever they want to, quite frankly. But, you know, we, you know, sort of annually at least, we usually meet with somebody and to review the investment strategy, make sure nothing's changed in terms of the time horizon because, you know, the time horizon is gonna drive which of those strategies you use. And make sure that we should either stay with that investment strategy or change it. And I've had people change it in both directions, more conservatively and more aggressively. So that isn't, that's just, you know, whatever strategy is chosen is how, is, sets the risk parameters for how I, as their portfolio, I would be your portfolio manager, how I would manage those assets. And the way I kind of describe it is if you have a backyard and you let your kids go out in the backyard and there's no fence, you know, they could be down at the river, they could be in the neighbor's yard, they could be getting attacked by the dog over on the other side. But if there's a fence around the backyard, you don't really know what they're doing or where they are in the backyard, but they're, you know, they're within the confines of the backyard. And so the investment guideline document or the investment policy, you know, investment objective will kind of keep us in the yard.
Yeah, because the other thing for staff on this is if, I mean, I'm willing to go ahead and give a number today, but what I would like to see is, this was presented as offsetting the unfunded liability portion of our pension. So if I were to see a spreadsheet from this 2008 to 2021 with whatever we decide today is your amount, I'd like to see what, what the example would be. I mean, if, you know, how, what threshold benchmarks there are. I mean, we're not gonna just put money in one year and all suddenly have the money to, to offset the employer's portion of contribution.
I didn't mean to go that far. Okay, sorry about that. I thought there was another slide happening. Could somebody put that back up? Okay, so you, looking at?
I can't read that slide.
Yeah, I have a couple. So these are our different portfolios and this would be through June 30th.
I was looking at this.
So these are different portfolios. This is through June 30th. And what you can see is here are the different strategies from conservative at the bottom to capital appreciation at the top, the different equity allocations for those strategies, and then the investment returns over time. And so, you know, if you're thinking, you know, five years is kind of an investment cycle, right? So the balanced, the moderate strategy is up 4.77% and that's a compounding number. That's not from a dollar to a dollar four, it compounds over time. And you can kind of see here, so for example, if I show, I don't, we don't, here's Leif. Over five years, it's up 1%. So the one and a half, you know, maybe one, not quite one and a half percent. So these two strategies, like I said, kind of are like the inflation-fighting portfolios where they are adding another between 75 and 150 basis points of return. So if you think of inflation as sort of 2%, that's kind of your extra return to cover inflation, if that makes sense.
Okay.
And then as you go up the scale, you'll end up with, you know, over a long time horizon, of course. And that, but then you can see, here's the downside area, right? So capital appreciation down 14% through June for the one-year period, June to June. So whereas the conservative strategy was down 10%. And, and when I, that conservative strategy down 10% is pretty rare, actually. And that's because it's mostly fixed income. And that's because it's mostly, uh, fixed income. Um, but, you know, basically the, all the problems started in the bond market and then spilled over into the stock market. So the force fire was started in the bond market and spilled over to the stock market. And that's because Fed held down interest rates far too long. I mean, we had 30-year fixed mortgage a year ago was 3% and today it's 7%. And, you know, the Fed was artificially holding down interest rates. Um, I think, you know, when, when this all started in 2020, the COVID problem, um, the Fed basically flooded the capital markets with liquidity to, you know, make sure that while we're shutting down the economy, we're also not having an illiquid, uh, um, capital markets because, you know, companies have to roll debt to stay afloat. So General Motors has to, you know, a bond comes due and they have to roll the debt. They can't just pay for it. Um, so they don't want General Motors going bankrupt because of some weirdness in the economy. So the Fed did that as a, sort of like a bridge loan to get us to a, uh, a vaccine. I think the problem is, is that we got the vaccine in December of 2020 and the Fed forgot to turn off the, it's a spigot and, uh, ended up with inflation because it was, you know, us and every central bank in the world doing the same thing. But anyway, those are kind of the different returns and they, you know, those are annualized so they compound. Um, and then, what was the other slide I was going to show you real quick? Uh, here, this is for, okay, so here's for, uh, PSRP's of pension, the stable pension plans. You can see, um, 30, you know, the, the predominantly people are between moderately conservative and moderate. Uh, I think when it all began, um, it was, uh, more heavily moderately conservative and then it kind of moved over to, uh, to, to be more people taking the moderate strategy over time. But, and some people started in a lower risk level and moved up. Um, I have some that, you know, some that sit in the balanced area and their theory is, is that they don't, they don't need the money, so they're just going to let it compound.
Councilmember Allen.
That's, that's OPEB.
I, uh, have a question for.
Yeah. OPEB, uh, uh, ju- just to give you a contrast, so OPEB, uh, which is more like a pension time horizon, you know, that obligation to pay your guys healthcare costs is going to last for a long time. So you can see there, people are more moderate and balanced. So longer time horizon, a little bit higher risk level.
So I, uh, I would like to ask you, right here.
Oh, sorry.
I understand. So, uh, the, the market, the market is wide open and available for us for any, any equities, any bonds. Uh, I mean, I just, I found some, excuse me, I found some gum and eye bonds, you know, a couple of weeks ago, you know, and they're in excess of 9%, you know, and I'm just, I'm thinking, you know, I don't know, if, if, if these kind of things are available to us, these, you know, then even those, that can be a?
So let me, uh, turn to this slide here. This is, uh, so we will keep it very, um, your portfolio will be full of mutual funds, basically, and, um, they will be vetted by our research department and monitored by our research department, make sure that there's no changes at the firm that would, you know, we believe impact the returns. If a fund manager or, uh, particularly on the active side, if, if a fund manager's not doing well, we'll interview the firm to see what's going on and why, and sometimes that precipitates a change. Um, but here are the different funds on the active side and here are the different, uh, ETFs and, uh, and passive funds on the passive side that we use. Um, it's not going to be anything, um, that would, you know, cause a problem. There's no financial leverage, nothing like that. Um, and, and just to sort of highlight what I was talking about, so, uh, in the small cap area, we have this undiscovered managers' behavioral value fund. And we had before, uh, um, blanking on the name of the firm, but we had a, an active fund in there on the, um, small cap growth and on small cap value. The small cap value manager ran into a rough period. We interviewed the firm, found out what was going on and decided to stick with them. And then they ended up being a top-tier firm, which, you know, doesn't always work out that way, but it did this time. Uh, with the, uh, small cap growth manager, same thing, 2021, they did poorly on a relative and absolute basis. We interviewed the firm to see, you know, what was going on and whether or not we'd stick with them. And we decided to, uh, basically get rid of them and we've just been using a, um, ETF as a substitute till we get another manager in there. And that fund subsequently continued to do poorly, so it was a good thing we got rid of it. So, you know, we're, there's a lot of, uh, things that go on behind the scenes and, you know, basically when we do this in terms of both managers that we use as well as, uh, how we weight the portfolios.
Further questions? All right. Seeing none, I'll open public comment. Is there, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam.
Oh, one other thing I might mention, um, in this first slide back here. So, uh, Highmark Capital Management, my firm, is, uh, the Investment Management Division of Union Bank. And US Bank is buying Union Bank and it's actually, the deal's actually closing on, uh, December 1st. Um, so soon the investment manager and the trustee will be under the same umbrella. Um, I, I'll just tell you that I have, um, other pensions that I manage where a US Bank, uh, trust officer comes to the meeting. They're the trustee and I'm the investment manager and we work well together. Um, and, but, you know, most of the time the trustee and the investment manager are the same, so it's not going to be a conflict of interest or anything. It's just u- unique that they hired us to, uh, be the investment manager. That isn't usually happen. So, and we did well, so they never took it away.
All right. So full disclosure, huh?
Yeah, I just wanted everyone to know that. So, um, because we listed as three different firms, so pretty soon it's two different firms.
All right. Mayor Protem.
You said, you know, 1969 was probably the worst time or we seen this market the way it is today. And of course, we know long-term growth that always pays off. And then, you know, unfortunately, the short-term growth, that's, you know, checking balance and stuff. And, um, you know, I've been sitting on the sideline and, you know, the market I think right now is driven on, you know, emotions besides the Fed raising the rates, especially the small caps have been borrowing money left and right for, well, free money. And that's what the small caps love. And, um, but what do you foresee, and I know it's, people will say, I have a crystal ball, but your 27 years experience, you know, something. What do you foresee, you know, like next year, how it's going to turn out? Because I, I don't know what the Feds have, you know, they're going to probably two more times than this interest rates, but eventually stop, you know, seven halves pretty much what, you know, I paid for my first house to interest. And I know before, back in the days, they were like at 12% and even higher. So what do you foresee, uh, the market doing? Your prediction?
So the, the Fed is, uh, you know, inflation is really the biggest tax on the poor and the working class. Um, you know, ultra wealthy people just have money. Um, so, a- a- and food and gas and those things are a real budgetary concern for, um, for most people. So the Fed, uh, and, and I might add also, you don't go to the Fed Chairman Hall of Fame, walk in there with, uh, raging inflation when you retire. So, uh, I think, uh, our current Fed Chairman, Jerome Powell, would like to be anointed to the, uh, Fed Chairman Hall of Fame along with some of his friends. And, uh, so he's going to, uh, break inflation. You know, I, I think, um, uh, you know, I don't know what will happen next year. I, we're going to raise rates 75 basis points at the next meeting. You know, at some point we will get to the point where we're not raising rates at such a high rate because we've had now three 75 basis point rate hikes and it'll, 50 or 25, something to that effect. But, um, it, it's going. Fed funds rate to the 10-year treasury and that's almost guarantees a recession. And of course, housing, you know, you mentioned 7% mortgage, uh, you know, so if it goes seven, if it stays at seven for a while, that's going to really slow the housing market down. Um, you know, I don't, I don't think that would bother the Fed too much. Um, house prices went up 20% a year for the last two years, so they're not supposed to do that either. Um. So, uh, you know, I think we're going to. They get to a point where they're going to hold rates for a while and, uh, and let the policy actions that they've taken kind of run through the pipe because, you know, it takes, uh, eight, eight to 12 months for what they do today to show up in the economy. And, uh, so they've been, you know, we're going to get into, you know, how is it looking in a year? And then I think once we get to that point where, uh, rate, you know, people start to forecast the rate hikes are kind of coming to a conclusion, then maybe, uh, the, um, stock market might stabilize at that point.
All right. Well, give me one good reason why we should go with your company verse, like what Councilmember Allen said, you know, the treasury bonds or even like I have a CD for almost 2.75% locked in for 18 months. What, what make, you know, because this is the taxpayers' money. And, you know, we're committed to making sure that we use it right for, you know, future investment to pay down this debt. But what's a, give me one good reason why we should go with you and not do a really conservative, safe?
Yeah. Oh, I mean, you know, we, you can do that too. I mean, we, I have one client that's in treasuries. That's their strategy for it. They, like, we don't want to lose a dime. So, you know, the, the gambit goes all the way from there. We, I don't know if we have any that are 100% stocks, but we do have some that are in the capital appreciation strategy. And, uh, you know, I'd say not necessarily a small amount of money, a pretty large account in it. Um, and that one is well-funded. They don't really need to do that, but they just believe that's the best thing to do. So I would just say your obligation is growing and, uh, it's growing at a higher rate than treasuries. So, you know, it's better to try to, um, invest the money, you know, if, if inflation is at five and you're earning four on your treasury, you're actually losing one on a real rate. So, um, you know, I, I think that, you know, we're having a period where, you know, recession, most money is made in recessions. And so we're kind of in that mode right now, which is giving you an opportunity to, uh, do this as long as you have a time horizon that's long enough to withstand the ups and downs in the near term.
All right. Thank you.
Further questions? All right. One last opportunity for public comment.
No, Madam.
All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for consideration of how they'd like to move forward. Councilmember Robles.
You know, um, because this is taxpayers' money and I want, you know, I want to make it clear that we're still the policy body. And so, um, I want to make sure this policy body is driving the cart, uh, of this. Um, and also I haven't seen any, any numbers. When I worked for, for county government, you know, I never did a staff report where we didn't show if your goal's to reduce our employer obligation, you know, where's, where's the spreadsheets with scenarios? I don't have any. Um, so what I'd like to do is I think we should have a standing ad hoc committee on, on, on this. Um, let's do the spreadsheets and come back a fourth time to see exactly what we're doing here. And maybe the ad hoc can recommend a couple of strategies in those scenarios for us to act on.
I think that might be a good way to move forward. This is a real complicated thing for us to decide right here on a dais. It would be nice to have a couple of, of individuals look at and come back with, uh, ad hoc recommendations of what makes sense. Councilmember Allen.
I support that and I'd be willing to be a part of that, uh, subcommittee.
Okay. I'd like to be part of that ad hoc as well.
Is, do you need a motion, Mayor?
I need a motion before we can do, before we can go anywhere.
All right. I'll make a motion that.
Make some sort of motion. Otherwise, we're, we're waiting in deliberations.
I'll make a motion that we form an ad hoc subcommittee to address the PARs 115, Section 115 trusts. How do, how do we want it worded, Mr. City Manager?
As you stated, but also specify the, the members on the committee.
Okay. Myself and the mayor's, uh, has to be on it.
I have a substitute m- uh, motion, the same wording, but to, to appoint, um, Bill Hussey and the mayor to the ad hoc committee.
I'll second.
Which one are you seconding? The alternate?
Alternate.
Okay. So any further discussion on this? All right. So we'll vote on the motion to have an ad hoc committee of myself and Mayor Protem to report back to the council on, uh, recommendations. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Allen voting no.
Right. Thank you. We'll move on to item 12, which is approval of revisions to the city's fiscal policies and first reading introduction of ordinances, amending chapter 3.24 and 3.26 of the municipal code. And I will just go on to Mr. Terry Shea, interim Finance Director.
This should be a lot less controversial, so here we go.
Well, we'll, we'll see.
So we haven't, um, visited these policies since 2014 and, you know, still has like childcare reference in there and then the successor agency, so they're kind of updating the policy. So it supports the city council's goal by ensuring our fiscal viability through monitoring of our actual revenues and expenditures against budget appropriations. Probably not the right thing there, though. So cash handling, petty cash, change boxes, investments, fixed assets, purchasing, travel and related business expenses, and then unclaimed money. Cash handling and control, the changes may include removing all verbiage relating to the childcare center, increasing the accumulated deposit amount and adding verbiage of how often the deposit should be taken to the bank. Uh, cash funds and change boxes includes removing all the verbiage relating to the childcare center. And then the investments, this change includes removing verbiage relating to the successor agency and increasing the maximum amount of the pool investment life, um, from 50 million to 75 million. That's a, a state statute. Capital assets or fixed assets, this changes policies to removing the budgetary basis for depreciation as it increases the operating costs. To offset this, staff recommends that fund balance be set aside in Fund 70, the equipment replacement fund, at each of the fiscal year depending on the reserves that are available. So what we would do is we'd be funding our equipment replacement on an annual basis. Purchasing, increase the purchasing limits for informal purchases, formal purchases, open market purchases, uh, to reflect the increases in inflation. Um, changes to chapter 3.24 of the municipal code to increase the city manager's authorization limit from the purchase of supplies, material and equipment and services from 10,000 to 25,000. And then changes to chapter 3.26 of the municipal code to increase the city manager's authorization limit from 10,000 to 25,000 for the award of contracts relating to public projects and maintenance work. And then the travel and business-related expenses, um, this change to this policy is Exhibit A, which is attached, which has been simplified to ease the use. And then unclaimed money, um, which we took the successor agency out of that, so. So staff's recommendation is to approve the proposed revisions to the attached city fiscal policies, subject to the council's approval of the above-mentioned ordinances.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shea. Questions of staff? All right. Seeing no questions, we'll open public comment. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam.
All right. Close public comment and come back to council for any further discussion and consideration. Councilmember Allen.
Mayor, regarding, um, item 12, I would like to make a motion to, uh, approve staff recommendations, all three.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson, Mr. City Attorney. I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion? I fell into a lull. Thank you for, thank you for calling me on that. Did you have more you wanted to say? Please, please do.
Yeah, I just want to, um, let my peers know that when you give sign, um, uh, higher spending authority to your city manager, then you need to be more comfortable that there's going to be a lot of things that you're not going to see on, on the agenda. And, but at any point that you feel that you're losing control, you could also come back and change, change that.
Good point. Good point. Any further discussion before we vote? All right. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two ordinances and one resolution on the, it's more, I shouldn't say resolution, it's more revisions to the fiscal policies. So, I'm going to read each title, and, and then we'll take one vote. So, the first ordinance is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, amending sections 3.24.070, 3.24.080, 3.24.090, and 3.24.120 of chapter 3.24 of Title III of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, thereby changing the thresholds for purchasing procedures, sale of surplus supplies, materials and equipment, and city manager's authorization limit to 25,000, and adding section 3.24.190 to chapter 3.24 of Title III of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, which adds requirements relating to conflicts of interest and unlawful activity. That is the first ordinance. The second ordinance is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, amending sections 3.26.030A and 3.26.050E of chapter 3.26 of Title III of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, which increases the city manager's authorization limit to $25,000 for contracts for public projects and maintenance as defined therein. Those are both of the titles, and then there is the, also the approval of the revisions to the attached city fiscal policies. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Right, we have no request for future agenda items, so we'll move to council communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, thank you, Mayor. The, since the last council meeting that we had. So, I was real pleased to attend the Unity Day recognition at Terrace View Elementary on Wednesday, October 19th, on the morning. We were all invited out there to celebrate Unity Day with the kids at the Grand Terrace Schools. And it was really great being there with all the kids out there in the playground as they learned about working together. Mayor Magna Bo was there and spoke about, you know, working together. And I talked with the kids about how we work together as, in unity here to advance the, move forward and progressively move the city forward. And I'd like to think that they took away a good message from us, and, but it was also a lot of fun. That same afternoon on Wednesday, I attended the Solid Waste Advisory Task Force on October 19th. And the subject matter, there's a lot of legislative updates, and they talked about SB 1383. But what I found, you know, I want to leave you with here from that meeting was that two things. First of all, the landfill that services us, our area, Santa Mateo, just submitted a five-year re permitting plan. But what I found really interesting is that the Oro Grande Cement Plant, the Portland Cement Plant in Oro Grande, is requesting a new solid waste facilities permit to accept and use engineered municipal solid waste to make cement. And this is going to really help out in the environment, because up until this time, the only thing they've had that they've used is coal and natural gas. And then environmental, excuse me, the environmental municipal solid waste was then, was, there wasn't really a plan to dispose of it other than just to break it apart or bury it or whatever. But now, they can use it in, in a conversion facility to make cement. And that's going to cut down by half the projected emissions from the plant. So, that is good news for us in this area, because cement production is expected to increase more than double in the next year, few years. And then on, the next day, on Thursday, October 20, I took the opportunity to attend the San Bernardino Valley Water District Meeting. And there were two specific subject matters that they discussed that morning, the challenges of providing an equitable and affordable water supply in California, and then local solutions to ensure water equity throughout the region. Now, I know that, you know, we are serviced by Riverside Highland, unlike some of our neighboring agencies that have public water service like San Bernardino City and those areas. But, but still, the same thing holds true for, for water conservation. And that is that, the two, I wrote this down here, and I thought it was really interesting that the single most important thing that a person can do or people can do to conserve water is, and I, I thought it was, you know, not take long showers, but it's actually converting from septic to sewer. And I remember we had a little discussion a few weeks ago where I learned that we still have people in our city, residences in our city, who are on septic. And septic is a huge water-wasting mechanism. And now with the state is going to start using the sewage plants as anaerobic digesting plants, there's a real big effort in the, also with grant money behind it, to get people to convert from septic to sewer, if it's possible. And some of the presenters were talking about grants of upwards of 30 grand for a resident to convert over. And so, even though this, we have an, you know, investor own, our water company, we, you know, the, the discussion was centered around finding ways to help out residents who do not have the means available to make these conversions, work with municipal water districts to retrofit programs. These are most predominantly in trailer parks. And then another thing is to convert with smart water meter system, the advanced metering infrastructure. Now, this also would not be on, something that we as a city would undertake, but this is because we have this water district, Riverside Highland Water Company. However, if there are ways that our city could help residents or the water company make this, accomplish this, then that is what the, the discussion was about. But the bottom line about the, the help that's available to residents is that better community relations to educate the public about all this help that's available, you know, like information in the water bills and things like that. On Friday, October 21, the next day, it was a busy week. I spent lunchtime with the kids at Terrace Hills Middle School, celebrating Red Ribbon Week. It was the close of Red Ribbon Week, and we had a great big event there. Lieutenant Lane was there, and chiefs, your firefighters were there. It was great. The kids loved it. The pictures are all over social media about it, and they were talking about it, and I'm sure they still are. But we spent two, three hours there, the mayor was there, and we worked with the kids and played games with the kids and helped them learn about the value of saying no to drugs. And also, not just saying no to drugs, but there was a lot of emphasis on anti-bullying and kindness counts and, and all these things that are important for youth and, and this age group and everything. And so, thank you, gentlemen, and for your teams showing up there, and it was great being there with the mayor. And there was several, well, I see Dr. G. and John Escheveria from Colton City Council were there, so that was good, also seeing them there. And also, I met the owner of Loud Burger. He was there, and that was really great to see him there, participating in that. So, yeah, you know, the, I want to, that was a great time, and the kids liked it, and I look forward to doing those kind of things with the kids. Now, one last thing I want to talk about is, is what's coming up between now and our next meeting, and those are two events. On Tuesday, November 8, we've got Voting Day, and on November 11 is Veterans Day. And those two events, you know, are coming up, so I'd like for everybody to plan on, make sure that you go to the polls and you vote, or you fill out your ballot and you vote. There's a really, 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 really important measure on the ballot this, this year. Measure M for the city of Grand Terrace can really, really help this city out. And I want, I hope everybody really understands that Measure M is not something that's going to cost our residents any money. And you've received mailers in the mail. We've been straight up and straightforward, the city has been. No, there's nothing that they're not saying. The measure is, unlike some other measures that are on the ballot this year, this measure is not the least bit, doesn't hide anything, doesn't, is telling everything about it. So, there's no question as to what the money is for and where it's going to come from and who's going to, and where it's going to go. So, I encourage everybody to please read, read your, read your ballot books that you get in the mail, read the pros and the cons of every measure that's on there, not just Measure M, but every measure that's on your ballot, because you will be surprised at what you learn about some of these measures that are on this ballot. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
I don't have anything. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
I don't have anything official. I spent the last week in Chicago, and I noticed in our art in public places, they had Jackson Pollock, and they had him at the Art Institute, and then American Gothic, you know, the daughter and the farmer with their, with those things. It was really great. But I just wanted to, the meeting before last, Councilmember Allen had talked about the little waste pot. I bought one. The charcoal filter doesn't filter out much. It's pretty stinky. But, you know, of getting into the habit of larger stuff, like, or like celery that you don't want to put in your disposal, I'm, I'm getting acclimated to that. And so, thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. This Friday night, the Titans are playing Rem of the World, and it's also Senior Night. So, they're doing a fundraiser, a shout-out, so it's five dollars, you know, just to wish the seniors or somebody, you know, congratulations, or just, it's one of their fundraisers for the parade and everything else they could do for the seniors. So, they had that on social media. And then I got numerous calls, I don't know why I got the calls, but their residents were concerned, I thought they, they probably thought I was still on that measure for the school, but about the floor and the roof, because I guess the floor in the gym, and I know the wrestlers talked about it, the floor was all messed up because they had a water leak. Found out they had a water leak behind the wall, it was ongoing, so it messed with the floor, and then the roof, the tarps. So, I'm just going to tell the residents what I found out is, the school district is going to be fighting the insurance company and the contractor, so the contractors got to admit that they put a faulty roof in for the insurance company pays for it. And I said, well, that's probably going to be long-term, so the way the, one of the school district people told me that they're probably going to go ahead and pay for it and fight with the insurance company later. So, that's just a follow-up on that. And then a family court awareness month, you know, that hit a nerve, you know, because I recently had to deal with that with my niece's kids, and then go onto those, the court systems and seeing all the lost children there and the hopelessness and what the families go through. And then, and then dealing with CPS, and then if you're not a, a blood relative and how much they, you know, pretty much don't, you know, it's just the way the pecking order is. I mean, because their main goal is to bring the families back together, and so there's no abuse and what the lady was talking about, the mental abuse, too, that these kids go through. So, you know, I'm glad our city's recognizing that, and, you know, there's people that will help you. You just got to, the squeaky wheel gets the oil in that court system, and, you know, you got to remember to continue fighting, you're fighting for those kids. So, I'm glad we were able to recognize the family court awareness month on that, and those people who are taking the effort to fight for the, the young people who have no voice. So, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to say about the Unity Day at Terrace View and the Red Ribbon Week at Terrace Hills Middle School, I want to thank the PTA, so that's teachers and parents, and all the time and effort that they put in, and how engaged they were with, with helping the students to recognize healthy living and working with each other and, and working together as teams. And so, that was, that was really nice to be invited to be part of it, but I know that the hard work went into it by the teachers and the parents. And so, thank you very much for not just caring about the students, but caring about the community, because what they do is going to really drive positive change in the community. And then, as far as art in public places, just as a, just as a thought to that, I understand there was a little bit of a disturbance, well, at least it was considered a disturbance. It was out of the ordinary at, at our park over by the senior center. And there were a number of, of youth over there in the evening. And then, out on social media came all the pre-dance pictures for homecoming. And so, what that told me is they really cherish that park as a wonderful place to be, and they thought it would be a wonderful setting for their pictures. So, two things, one is the youth in our community, they weren't there to destroy the park, they were there to enjoy it, and they were there to enjoy its beauty. And that's just a wonderful thing to know about our, about our students in this city. With that, I'm going to end and say, Mr. City Manager, do you have any communications for us?
Yeah, Monday night, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., is a trunk or treat, it's behind the Walgreens parking lot in the backside there. We have 20-some vehicles from the yield I was working with, from classic cars involved. Fire and law enforcement will be in there, so we will have people dressed up as firemen and policemen for part of this.
Wonderful.
And I believe Lieutenant Lane also has a, some information for you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. A couple of things with, with us receiving this OTS grant money that we have, we're going to be putting it to some good use here, and I know we have a meeting in the next couple of weeks here. But Friday, November 25th and December 9th, we have two operations planned here in the city. I won't go into a lot of details at this point, but just know on those two dates, we will have extra deputies out on the streets conducting multitude of enforcement. And we'll, we'll do our best to remind everybody ahead of time of that. The other thing, too, is we've been working with Johan and his folks on putting together this Echicat catalytic converter program, and I think we're getting close on it. I'd like to say that sometime between the next city council meeting and Thanksgiving, that we actually have a date and a location that we'll, we'll be able to announce at the next meeting. So, that's my hope, is that we can put it together to, to take place sometime in, in that week or two period. And our last opportunity to promote that will be at the next meeting, but we'll make sure we put that out on social media and let everybody know as, as best we can. I think it's going to be a, a great benefit to the people. Certainly, it may not help them getting their catalytic converters stolen, but it'll, it will certainly help us do the, the enforcement side of it and, you know, put the crooks in jail for, for having catalytic converters with somebody else's VIN on them. So, we're looking forward to that. Aside from that, I, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bolowich, and thank you, Lieutenant Lane. Anything further? All right, so we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held Tuesday, November 8th at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. The request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.